Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I advise members of the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any diffamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of this meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the Warrnambool people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock Local Government area. For tonight's prayer, we have Reverend Nicole Baldwin from the Anglican, Cessnock Anglican Church. But before we begin tonight's prayer, I'd like to start by asking everyone to consider the victims and families of the horrible scenes we witnessed at Westfield-Bondi Junction over the weekend and then subsequently the Western Sydney Church. Amidst the horrific scenes, we saw inspiring acts of courage from first responders and members of the community. But none more so than Police Inspector Amy Scott. I'm advised that Inspector Scott grew up in our community, so on behalf of residents from across our region, I would like to thank her for her service and a quick thinking and divisive action that saved many lives. Reverend Baldwin? I'll ask councillors to please stand for the council prayer.
Gracious God, as we pray for our council, we stay mindful of the events this week in Bondi Junction and Wakely, praying for all who have suffered through these violent attacks. We pray for peace, respect and justice for all. We pray for the council of the city of Cessnock, its members and officers. Direct their work and influence their decisions to the advancement of your glory and the safety and welfare of this city, so that peace and happiness, truth and justice and sound development may be established among us. Guide their speaking and listening to be considerate and generous. In all their talking, thinking, planning and decision-making, give them courage to say what needs to be said and humility to accept decisions with which they do not agree. We bring our prayers to you in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Baldwin. There are no apologies. Are there any leaves of absence? Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request leave from tomorrow, the eighteenth of April through to the thirtieth of April, please.
Leaves of absence, sorry, that's been moved by councillor Moore, seconded by councillor Hawkins, that that leave be granted. No debate, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Confirmation of previous minutes, someone moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander, no debate, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Disclosures of interest. Councillor Judd?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the report number WI nine slash twenty twenty four, report title, new landfill extension project changes to biodiversity. I, Jessica Judd, declare the following interests, family work there and I will be leaving the chamber. Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item RM one twenty twenty four, the rescission motion with regards to DA eight twenty twenty one, twenty two, three, one, eight, one, seven oh one, Love Dale Road, Love Dale. I, James Hawkins, declare the following interest, as a non-procurnary less than significant conflict, for the reason that I am an associate of an employee of the applicant, I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting, as the conflict does not influence me in carrying my public duty, this issue will not impact my decision-making. CC nineteen twenty twenty four, the rate subsidy policy, I, James Hawkins, declare the following interest, a non-procurnary interest less than significant conflict, for the reason that I am a member of a club that occasionally use facilities associated with this report. I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting, as the conflict has not influenced me in carrying out my public duty, because I'm an ordinary member and do not hold any executive positions. Thank you.
And I'll declare the following disclosures of interest on report RM one twenty twenty four, Love Dale Development Application, non-procurnary less than significant conflict, that I'm an associate of an employee that works for the applicant, choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting, as the conflict does not influence me in carrying out my public duty, because it does not impact their employment. In relation to report WI eleven twenty twenty four, minutes of the Community Engagement Awards and Grants Committee, I'll declare a non-procurnary less than significant conflict, for the reason that my son attends a school, one of the non-eligible schools, that applied for funding in item D O L C L M two twenty twenty four, and I choose to remain in the chamber to participate in discussion and voting, as this conflict has not influenced me in carrying out my public duty or decision-making. And then in report CC nineteen twenty twenty four, the rate subsidy policy, I will declare a non-procurnary less than significant conflict, for the reason that I'm a member of a club that uses facilities listed in the report, I'll choose to remain in the chamber to participate in discussion and voting, the conflict has not influenced me in carrying out my public duty, because I'm an ordinary member and not a member of the executive. We'll now move on to petitions, not aware of any petitions, there's no public address, consideration of adoption of all reports by Englobo. Councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That having read and considered the reports in the agenda relating to items M O U three, motions of urgency, officers' reports, CC twenty three, two thousand and twenty four minutes of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Committee, CC twenty four, resolutions tracking report, WI ten, minutes of the local traffic committee, WI eleven, minutes of the Community Engagement Awards and Grants Committee and WI twelve, the main bun wall, South Cessnock Bun Wall Evaluation Report. Having read those, that council adopt the recommendations as printed for those items.
Those seconded, councillor Sander, no debate. Question?
I just want to quickly check, just because the email that we got with Englobo, did WI eighteen, like get W one eight, get pulled out, pulled out at Englobo?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So, no further debates, we'll put that item, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Are there no merrill minutes, are there any motions of urgency? No motions of urgency. We'll now move on to rescission motion, RM one twenty twenty four, someone moving that way, it's councillor Watten, seconded by councillor Judd. Speaking, councillor Watten?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been quite a long-standing matter with council and longer since I've actually been involved with it, so I've been involved with this since back in September twenty twenty two. And when I found out with my own eyes, when I saw what was going on, I had to call this up immediately to the next available council meeting. That was, I felt like it was prolonged and stalled and it didn't actually get into an actual meeting until March twenty twenty four. So, no apologies, it was November twenty twenty three. And at that time it was deferred, until further reports were actually obtained and submitted to council. And then back in March twenty twenty four, council recommended to refuse the application again. And I just want to give a brief history about what those actually are, because I really believe that us as a council have made the wrong decision here and I firmly believe that we're actually exposing ourselves to potential Land Environment Court action. So, to rehash the initial findings for the refusal, so the proposal failed to satisfy the following provisions of the Cessnock Local Environment Plan two thousand and eleven. The RU four primary production small lot zone in that development will not be compatible with the surrounding land uses, this is as per our council report, nor consistent with the character report to ordinary meeting. The proposal fails to satisfy the following provisions, that there's a land use conflict, and I'm not going to go through all these points right now, the land use conflict and buffer zones, that it's likely to result in land use conflict with surrounding rural and residential land uses, as a result of noise and lighting impacts, emphasis on noise and lighting impacts. In the proposal, it does not comply with decided boundary setbacks that will generate an unacceptable level of noise and lighting impacting on the adjoining properties and results in land use conflict. Point C, there's insufficient information that's been provided to determine the likely impacts of the development on surrounding properties in relation to noise and lighting, again, noise and lighting, noise and lighting. Point E, I'll skip ahead, the proposal is not considered to be in the public interest pursuant to section four, dot fifteen of the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act nineteen seventy nine. And then there's consideration of the community views which were heard and supplemented this The development was not compatible with the zone, it's not compatible with the RU four mixed use of that particular zone, it's not. Subsequently, after this was deferred and came back to the last month's meeting in March, there were forty-four conditions of consent, which we, I'm assuming that we've all had a chance to actually read those conditions of consent. In my opinion, in the opinion of many people that I've spoken to, these conditions of consent are general, they don't actually address it and there's only forty-four of them. All these issues that were outlined, that didn't meet the actual regulations that it needs to meet, the forty-four conditions of consent did not meet those. For example, I'll go through a couple of these things, and we got them one hour before the meeting, so it was barely enough time to read that, so I wish we could have deferred it to actually review these things properly, but we couldn't at the time. Addressing these conditions of consent, there were two peer-reviewed noise impact assessments that were provided and supplied to council, one of which council actually paid for ourselves, the rate pays money. It backed and, you know, helped council make this decision, the initial findings. It's, we're still using, based on these conditions of consent, the old noise impact study that quite frankly doesn't hold any weight, because the peer-reviewed studies come out and said it doesn't work, the initial findings should still hold true. The only mitigation strategy that seems to be in place at present appears to be the planting of more trees. Well, I don't know, but like when you plant a tree, it's going to take some time to actually grow. There's ongoing issues with this, it's just ongoing, the ongoing compliance issues that are happening, there's been seven raised since this last got debated on a meeting, so we're holding ourselves at high risk here. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking to councillor Judd?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked today in an email for the change of the development consent, so in nineteen ninety nine was a cellar door, now operates as a food and beverage, has this development got a relevant DA for that?
Director?
Thank you through you, Lord Mayor. There was a two thousand and ten consent that enabled the cafe use and there is an amendment with additions and a shade structure in two thousand and eighteen that were issued with consent.
Thank you so much, that saves you writing the email. So, was council aware of the illegal land clearing?
Thank you, through you, Lord Mayor, I'll get better at pressing buttons. There are a number of non-compliance's on the site that we're seeking to address through the current consent. The specifics around the land clearing, I can't talk to, but I'm aware that there were a number of non-compliance's that we'll still need to follow up pending how the applicant goes with providing the information within the consent, if that's in fact confirmed this evening.
Thank you. Just seems like we've got these rules and we're not following them. So, having a look over the design of where they're going to do all this, could council go back to the developer and look at like moving the containers so that they're further from the neighbouring property?
And so, sorry, could you just repeat that question again, could the?
Could council defer this report, right, go back to the developer and look at moving those containers, which I'm guessing could be removed, right, and move them further away from the existing property neighbouring that's causing a lot of the issues to?
Do you, the director, do you want to take that? I think this motion's not about the conditions of consent, this is about whether the conditions, whether we rescind the conditions of consent completely and then look at potential alternatives.
Okay, well maybe I'll refrain my question. So, if this passes tonight, right, can the residents contact council about council going into a mediation with the developer to make, I don't know, go like to move the, to move the, to improve the conditions, you know, if we've got an upset neighbour who in that zoning state she's well in her rights to be upset, because the rules state it's not compliant, you've already said that, so why can't we look at moving the containers? Yeah, it's a bad precedent, yeah.
Yeah, the director, do you want to take?
Thank you through you, Lord Mayor. If I'm, sorry, it will depend on the decision that the council makes in relation to the rescission motion, if the applicant, if you were dealing with, the consent is affirmed, it would be up to the applicant to supply additional information, it wouldn't be our practice to go back to, that would be a matter for the neighbours to talk, but there are, there will be, there will be necessary changes to some of the buildings as a result of the need to comply with the Building Code and the National Construction Code. The scale and extent of that will be subject to future information that he will need to provide before any construction and use of those buildings can.
Could it be put as, we've got forty-four stipulations on the consent, could it be put as one of them, so that we have forty-five at looking at moving it away from the existing neighbour?
I'm on, sorry, through you, Mayor. The council, I mean, you'd need to recommit, that's a governance and process issue that I don't believe is a matter that I can address in the response, it would be a matter for the council in the deliberation of this matter.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, how can I put that as an extra on tonight's forty-four consent?
So, the, the only way to change the conditions of consent tonight are to, would be for the rescission motion to be supported and then additional, and then new conditions be issued for the consent of the development application. So, there's, I don't believe there's anything you could add into this current resolution, it would need to be.
If it went into the next stage?
If it went into the next stage. So, the acting general manager?
Thank you. Councillor Judd, the rescission motion process is essentially a two-step, so the first bit is you are seeking to have council's decision of the March council meeting rescinded. If that gets supported tonight, that will effectively mean there is no decision on the development applications. And then the second part of that process would be that you would need to move an appropriate motion, that may be that, you know, similar to what the November one was, that a further period of time be granted to thrash out all these issues that are at play, but certainly you wouldn't, I wouldn't think you'd be able to off the table, adding a range of development consent items, because one, they may not be legal and they may not be enforceable and it may actually mean that you end up in a very messy court case in relation to that. So, you do need to look at this in two processes. And the first part is you are seeking to get the decision rescinded, if that gets supported, there is no decision of council. If the rescission motion doesn't get supported, the original decision of council from March stands and the conditions of consent will be issued and then it's up to the planning department and the director to seek enforcement of those conditions and it's up to the applicant who gets the conditions of consent to meet those obligations under that consent.
Okay. Okay, so let me just put that in my words, if we vote this now, it means we don't get another chance to put those into play on the consent, is that what you just said?
Sorry, just to clarify, you're moving the rescission motion, so if the decision motion, rescission motion is defeated, then the previous decision that's already been made stands.
Okay, so there's no chances actually changing it tonight?
It's only after, if the rescission motion succeeds, there is no decision of last meeting and therefore anything could be put.
Can we defer this, so that we could actually talk about putting that?
We can't defer the rescission motion, I don't believe, because the decision was made. If the rescission motion is successful, then you can defer the assessment to allow for conditions of consent to be considered.
Yep.
But we can't defer the rescission motion, because we need to make a decision based on what, we're either accepting the decision from last month or we're not.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor Saval. Excuse me. I will not be supporting this motion. Four weeks ago, more than enough time was spent discussing DA slash eight, slash two zero two one, slash two two three one eight, slash one. The matter was concluded with the granting of the DA subject to conditions as noted. Last Wednesday, I read of a recession motion, RM one slash two zero two four. No one spoke to this item at last Wednesday's briefing and since then I've not heard of any reason or argument to accept changing last month's vote. More interestingly, I received a call from an MBN reporter yesterday, she said, and I quote her very words, "Some Cessnock councillors are alleging you did not declare conflict of interest while voting on the Dec Cafe DA at the last meeting", end of quote. She wanted to know my side of the story before going to air with the story last night. I commended her for fact-checking, had those same Cessnock councillors done their due diligence over the past few months by fact-checking and turning up last Wednesday, I would not be here wasting everyone's time and resources, including MBNs. Incidentally, a story did air last night for twenty-four seconds, it did not mention me or a conflict of interest, but did mention that Cessnock council would be debating this DA for the third time. It also mentioned the DA had been approved in March with conditions, but a motion to change that has been issued by three councillors. Let me be absolutely clear, Mr. Mayor, I, nor any member of my family, have never undertaken any work for Mr. Matthew Dillo, neither for or on behalf of his acquisition of Garmleman's Wines or any other associated company. In conclusion, I invite my colleagues to reach out to me in a kind and respectful manner if they need clarification on any future issues, saving themselves from this embarrassment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and closing debate, councillor Watten?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to make clear that no time is any code of conduct thing mentioned here at all tonight, so we're talking about the conditions of consent, so, and there are like issues with the conditions of consent and they have been raised many a time and it's been an ongoing thing and it has been raised numerous times with council with regards to the issues that have been ongoing, the non-compliance issues. This is basically a large-scale operation that's been undertaken essentially via stealth. There's, that's what it's like, this is what we're looking at, where it's just like we're setting a precedence here for our community, hey, that's cool, like, you know, roll your eyes and everything like that, that's not a problem, but the thing is it sets a precedence for our community, where basically we're saying, we don't care, it's cool, do whatever you like, you know, and that's not good enough. The fact is, we don't just represent residents, we do, obviously, and businesses, we also got to look after council here as well, that's the issue, and I actually think this is actually going to lend itself to end up in Land Environment Court, I honestly do, it's headed that way. Yeah.
Councillor Watten has the floor, councillors remain silent while the other councillors are speaking.
And I, you know, in terms of like robust debate, there was no robust debate except for one other councillor, the past couple of meetings, that's the only robust debate that I heard. I'm looking at the reports here and I'm essentially looking at the fact that we're not listening to the professionals, we're not. And what we are saying to the community is basically, too bad, so sad, sorry to hear that, nothing we can do about it. I can't accept that, I don't think it's fair, we need to be fair and equitable of what we do and how we deal with our community. So, nothing was mentioned about code of conduct or anything like that, I, you know, I know things were mentioned at the last council meeting and things are out in the air and things like, but that's besides the point, I'm just trying to speak to the actual conditions of consent here, because I actually think that we've got it wrong, that's what this whole matter's about. So, thank you.
Thank you. With no further debates, we'll now put the item, all those in favour of the motion, councillors Watten and Judd, those against councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval, I'll declare it lost. We'll now move on to report PE six twenty twenty four, someone moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke, speaking on that councillor Judd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there an opportunity to put a point three underneath this, where council hold a day and time to help residents write a submission? Reason I say this is because at the briefing in the Wall and By Road, where on the screen it said there were a number of submissions received, that were very brief and communicated a personal opinion rather than providing a detailed feedback. If submissions need to be written a certain way, then it falls on council to show residents how it's done, so is that possible to put a dot point three?
So, this, well, it's possible to add a dot point, but we'd need to see what the dot point, the wording of the dot point.
Council hold a day and time to help residents write a submission?
Just while we're considering that there probably needs to be a question in regards to the director or acting general manager. in regards to the director or acting general manager around uh the impact on council staff and resources um for that and whether that's allocated for in in the the plan. So. Well, there.
Um, thank you. Can I suggest Counselor Jurd that um you amend your, you amend your amended dot point three to say something along lines of the general manager investigate um how we could do that. Um, because as it stands there, that is you actually allocating resource that may not necessarily be available. And it may actually be in conflict with our community participation plan. So if you could amend it to something along the lines, the general manager investigate options to hold a day and help in submissions. Um, I will point out that a submission doesn't have to be written in any set format. It can be dot points from an individual, it can be a handwritten note. Um, it could be anyone coming into the front counter and giving assistance there as well. So it doesn't have to be war and peace. It just needs, it just needs to be that, you know, I have this issue and these are things I'm concerned about. Um, and that's as simple as a submission needs to be.
The reason I, well, the reason I say it, um, direct, uh, general manager, sorry, um, is is because of that briefing where it said that only a certain amount was sort of really taken into consideration because most were opinion related. So I just really want an option for the community to learn how to write a submission. Just so that we've got better understanding. We want the public interest to be amazing. So, yeah. If that's possible. So anyway, I'll go on. Um.
And so just before we we do it, are are the movers and seconders accepting this additional dot point? Um, or is it being moved as a?
I don't want to do it.
So it's a, a no, a no. So we're gonna add it on as a, so it's been moved uh as an amendment to add that that dot point three by Counselor Jurd. And it was seconded by Counselor Watten. So, um, so Counselor Jurd was still speaking. So maybe if we let her finish speaking on her time.
I'm happy to answer that question if you want to ask the question.
Point of order.
And I'm, I'm sorry, you might have not, I thought the movers were seeking clarification before they decided whether they were going to take this on board or not. Um, it it may save an amendment being necessary if we could just get it clarified around if this is for this specific, particular topic or if it's a generalised inform the community of how to write a submission.
Generalised. I'd like to do it on anything that goes out onto public display is that they have an op- opportunity to either if they can come into the front desk and someone at the front desk can give them pointers on how to write a submission because not everybody knows how to do it. And I just think if we want to get the best like details back with our submissions back with the reports to work out the way council's going, this would absolutely help the community.
Yeah.
Um, so I think I might just provide some clarity on that. If it's not around specifically this
No, it's not around this, just this one. It's anything that goes out in public.
Probably should be a separate notice of motion to it because it's a a broad thing where tonight we're dealing with one item. And so I would think I would have to probably say that it should come back as a separate notice of motion.
Put in it as a notice of motion?
Yeah, as the, um, to cover the broad thing rather than if it's just in in relation to this one item. Um, like a a drop in session around this item, but if it's broader support for all submissions, then um there needs to be, like, it needs to be a separate item. If that makes sense.
Okay.
So we'll, we'd, yeah, we'll rule that amendment out. And um we'll go back to allowing you to speak on, finish your discussion on this item.
Thank you. Okay, so I sent an email today to ask, oh, no, it wasn't today, but I sent an email asking about um the hospital has one park per five beds, one park per two employees, yet a hotel has one park per room and one park per two employees, right? I did get a response as to why it was um that way. It's due to, let's see. Um. Oh, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was under the DCP chapter and why they did it. But my question is, we are going off Singleton and Hawkesbury LGAs to do that because originally they were talking about doing less, more uh, more car parks per bed than what we are actually doing and the model is off um Singleton. Do you under, do you know why we're going off Singleton rather than Maitland?
Director.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, that's a comparative. I wouldn't say we're going off Singleton or nor Maitland. The comparative data that it, the recommendation from the the consultant was that one space per five beds. And when we did that comparison, they were the councils that were similar. Maitland was at a, was at a higher rate. So it wouldn't be right to say that we're we're following um Maitland or Lake Macquarie or any of the other councils of comparative. It's just that's where it in that general comparison aligns.
No worries. I thought that. I just, well, I've got you. I'll ask. Um. Now, are we going to do this? What does it cost? So on page fifty three, it says that the current requirements do not give consideration for motorcycle parking, po- um bicycle parking and end of trip facilities, service requirements and provision of electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Now, you did answer that as well, saying that it would be on the developer. Is that right? For the cost of that?
Director.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, yes, what we're asking is to provide the infrastructure that enables the provision of charging stations, which would then be either through body corporate or other arrangements, uh, a matter for the the unit holder or the strata holder with the developer at purchase, but the developer is obligated to provide the infrastructure to enable electric vehicle charging to be made available in those developments.
Thank you. What are the, because it says there, um, because the end of trip facilities include showers and wash basin stations. So what are they? They're obviously more than just, um, we, it says showers and wash bas- basins, but where actually does that? Where they have those sorts of things? Because I, I, I know we've only got one, like, and they're usually around sports grounds.
Director.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Um, commercial and industrial depending, and there'll be a scale, that's sort of be a threshold. And that will encourage people to, I mean, electric scooters are now probably more more in vogue than than cycling, but you're providing the facilities and enabling people to travel home in an exercise format. And then shower, um, get themselves prepared for the for the workday. So there'd be lockers, toilets, changing room facilities and bike lockers or scooter lockers made available. But there'll be a threshold for commercial industrial style buildings and some larger residential developments, which we're not anticipating we'll get many of in Cessnock, but that's generally where you see them.
So are they going to be a developer thing or is they a rate payers thing?
No developer.
Developer. Okay, awesome. All right. Thank you so much.
With no further debate, uh, we'll now put the item, all those in favour. Uh, Councillors Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval, those against uh Counselor Watten and Counselor Jurd, I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving on to report PE seven twenty twenty four, uh, someone moving that way. Counselor Hill seconded. Uh, Counselor Grine. No debate. We'll put the uh Counselor Jurd, PE seven.
Sorry. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask, in this report, it talks about accessible toilet and upgrade meeting room costs at about five hundred thousand. That seems a lot of money.
Is that a a statement that it seems, or are you asking?
I'm just curious as to how an accessible toilet and an upgrade to a meeting room costs five hundred thousand.
Does.
Sorry, I didn't write down what page it was.
Page, was it fifty seven? Yep, um, yep. So the strategic planning manager.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this item's come before the contribution steering group meeting in the past and we've questioned the costing for this work because it's been funded through contributions. The um opponent, which is council, um, has gone back and done a review the costs for this project, including contingencies because it is a older heritage building. Um, and they they confirm that in their view, this is the cost. The costings will be refined when a detailed um costing um is is undertaken for the project.
Okay. How does that affect the report tonight if that's wrong? Well, you just said that that it, they're going, they're questioning it. So. Okay, so next question is about Dalwood Road. What are they actually doing to fix this road with it only being a twenty, twenty one thousand dollar project? Are they only just sealing the top or there's a spray? Yeah. I just, I just want that road fixed properly. It's a bit of a mess.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Counselor J, can I take that on notice, please? I'll, I'll get back to to on the details around that.
No worries. Thank you. Um, also, in in this report, it talks about the repealed plans. What does that mean? Does it, does, because why ask? Does it mean we would lose the contributions on page sixty if we do repealed plans?
Director.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mayor. Uh, no, it doesn't. The repeal plans remain in place for those um approvals that existed at the time that the plan was in place. So you continue to accrue contributions and they're applied in accordance with that repealed plan. And any new applications that are dealt with are then dealt with under the current contributions plan. And over time as that changes, so you, it's a similar to an existing use, right? If you want to call it that. Those development consents that are still out there that have been issued but yet acted upon, the repealed plan contributions continue to apply.
Okay, thank you so much.
No further debate. Let's put the item, all those in favour. Uh, Councillors Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, uh, Grine, that's unanimous. Uh, we'll now move to item CC nineteen twenty twenty four, the rate subsidy policy. Uh, moving Counselor Hawkins, uh, seconded Counselor Dunn. Uh, speaking, you're moving with additional points. Uh, Counselor.
Yes, thank you, um. Mr. Mayor, those uh points one to four, um, I'm I'm happy to move those and look, just briefly, I'll, I'll speak to them, that there are a number of organisations within our local government area that do great work. Um, that council have seen fit to to offer this subsidy to. Um, and I think it's a good, a good programme going forward. Um, and as it's reviewed, I'd like to hope that we um we look at the um, the need, I suppose, to annually review these applications um for organisations where the the structure and the the format and the purpose of the the organisation hasn't changed. Um, some of these for a hundred years. Um, I I think that moving forward, we can streamline this process. Uh, and and that that will be, will be done at the review. Uh, in the meantime, um, I think it's, it's great that the general manager can reach out to organisations that qualified last year and perhaps didn't get their paperwork in on time. Um, sometimes these things happen when a a secretary or a treasurer changes and that the new secretary or treasurer isn't quite up to speed with with what the correspondence means from the council and for their groups. Um, so I I think it's great that council are taking a proactive step to help these organisations. Um, because whilst it may not seem like a lot of money in the big picture for council, some of these organisations really struggle to to make enough money from charitable activities and and their own fundraising. And I think it's a great way that council can help them um to to meet their costs and continue to deliver their their services. So I'm I'm happy to move this and I'd, I'd like to to thank all of those groups for for the things that they do. Um, and yeah, hopefully in the future we can make the process quicker, easier and and streamline it. So this doesn't have to come back every year for our renewal. Thank you.
Counselor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a hundred percent agree with Counselor Hawkins here. This is an amazing programme. There's this is, you're looking at the lifeblood or some of the lifeblood of our community, these organisations that give so much and uh, it may not look like a big dollar amount, but it does go, every dollar does go a long way when you manage a not for, not for profit organisation. Uh, just want to have a quick, just a quick question about this. The, you know, particularly the grants and things like that, the dollar for dollar grants, there seems to be the same, you know, people applying, which is fantastic and they should. Um, how are we communicating this? I think our community engagement officers do a great job, but could I just ask how this is actually being communicated? Because a lot of these organisations may not, and I might be stereotyping here. I'll just say not everyone goes on the website. So how is this information being circulated to our community?
The acting director.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Counselor Watten, uh, generally, uh, the first point of contact is through the website, but also previous applicants have received letters directly from council asking them to apply again. Um, this is in regard to the rate subsidy. I can't speak to the dollar for dollar grant. I don't actually have that details to hand. Uh, where we have the information, we try to get in contact with them directly. Likewise with these ones that haven't actually put an application in, we'll be in contact with them this week.
Yeah, no worries. No, thank you. I might, thought that might have been the way, going through the ABN or ACN charity, you know, finder in the area. So that's good. Thank you.
No further debate. Uh, let's put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, CC twenty 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 four, plain's handling policy moving that way. Uh, Counselor Hill seconded Counselor Burke. Any debate? No debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. Uh, it's unanimous. CC twenty. So it's unanimous. Uh, CC twenty one. Uh, integrated reporting documents moving that way. Counselor Hill seconded. Uh, Counselor Sander, uh, speaking on that, Counselor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. Um, I just want to speak briefly on on this item. We see this, this integrated planning, um, of the operational plan sort of come across council each year. And it sort of gives a really good overview for the community um in regards to what council plans uh to do in terms of works and services over the next twelve months. I think it's a um, it's a fantastic opportunity during the consultation for this for people to to stop by and have a look on the website or reach out to a councillor and and have a chat about it to see what's going to be done in your area. You know, looking through the document at the moment, just for sort of my area of town, there's there's lots of money going towards road upgrades, park amenities, other services like the aforementioned um Currie Library toilet upgrade. So I encourage residents to have a look at this um, this documentation or get in touch and have a yak about it if you are keen to see what council's looking to get done in the next twelve months.
Counselor Jurd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, page seventy three of the draft twenty twenty four to twenty five budget currently shows a deficit of thirty million nine hundred and sixty nine thousand and fifty nine dollars before capital grants and contributions. The draft budget presents a cash budget position which also reflects a deficit on council's uses grant funds paid in advance of the capital projects. Now, the pro, the budget includes an increase in employee costs associated with an increase in full time equivalent staff. It says here provo- uh, providing for the award increase prescribed in the local government. So we know we have to do that, right? Is it true our cost of staff wages has gone up seven million? Did I read that right?
The acting director.
Uh, yes, Counselor Jurd, you have read that correct, but it's also an allocation of different costs as we uh redesign the general ledger. Previously, some of the costs were within materials and contracts. So you'll see that they are actually lower. P S B costs in wages terms are going up three and a half percent to do with the award increase and then a one off bonus, bonus payment, the award increase mandates as well.
Thank you. While council continue to fund this operation, operating deficit in the short term while remaining in strong cash, cash position, there will need to be further consideration given in the future on where and how council can source additional income to meet the requirements of ongoing maintenance of council infrastructure. So with that, where in this port, report does it account for Wallonby Road? The director of work said at the coffee with councillors at uh Bellbird on the twenty seventh that we have got the twenty that we have got the 22 million for the works, but I can't see it in this report. I can only see 3.8 million for contributions for Wallonby Road.
The acting director.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can tell you that the project for Wallonby Road and the expenditure we expect to spend next year on that, that programme is within the budget. I can't tell you exactly where it's at. I'm happy to take that on notice and get back to you.
Um, page 286 of the enclosure one under the, there's a budget forecast description location. There's a line item for Wallonby Road in Bellbird. The description is deliver road renewal stage one from Allendale Road to Abbotsford Street, listed as $10,356,500, which may have been the number the director, acting director was referring to.
Thank you.
Can I quickly ask where are we getting that money from? Because I thought the last, we had 3.8 million from contributions from Wallonby Road, so...
Acting director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The amount expected to be spent in next year's capital works programme is coming from the prepaid grant from the government.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
From the prepaid grant. The government has paid us in advance somewhere around $17 million that we are currently holding. Most of the expenditure in the next year, we'll be using that grant. So, we're not using any council funds at this moment in time, only grant funds.
So, I'm just trying to work out, you saying there, that's 10 million is all the grant? Is that what you're saying?
No. The acting director.
Can you break down, sorry, can you break down? So, what's grant money? What is contribution money and what is going to be council funded then?
I think what the acting director said was the, in next year's financial plan, operational plan, the only expected allocation of funds are coming from grant money.
Is that from that grant that we applied for?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, this road is going to go, so then the rest of the money will go into the next financial year?
Yes.
Thank you.
No further questions. Let's put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Savell, those against. Councillor Watten and councillor Judd. Declare carried. Uh, report CC22, 2024, moving that way. Uh, councillor Hill, seconded. Councillor Burke. No debate. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, report WI6, 2024, moving that way. Councillor Hawkins, uh, and seconded councillor Hill. Uh, speaking on that, councillor Hawkins.
Look, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you get a dot point four that I thought I emailed through? Maybe not. Could I move, please, that we include a dot point four to, to this that just reads... Yeah, all right. Are that any grammatical errors or typos within the report be corrected before its publication? Um, Mr. Mayor, look, in just the point four in...
So, and this second is happy with that, yeah?
Well, it's a pretty simple one, just that any little typos can be corrected to avoid any sort of confusion or misunderstanding. It won't change the substance of the report and the strategy. The strategy being an overarching, top-down look at what we see our local government area looking like traffic and transport wise in the next 20 years. I think the staging of various aspects are pretty well spelled out in this strategy. And yes, I'm happy to move forward with this strategy. It's actually noted within the report that it's a live document that's not exact and down to the details of engineering for every single little intersection or driveway or whatever it's going to be. Those things will be worked out in due course and in time. This is an overarching snapshot, I suppose you would say, of where our city's going to grow, taking into consideration growth areas that we know are coming on. And it leaves us, it puts us in a position where we can attract grant funding and we've identified where we're going to head and what we would be using those funds for. So, I think this is a good start to progressing our transport and traffic needs. And this document will give us a good sounding board for where we're headed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hawkins. And I'm assuming with the addition of dot point four, it means you've picked up a couple of typos in there. If I could ask you or any other councillors that have picked up some typos or grammatical errors to please send them through to council staff over the next week to make sure that they are fixed up before the document's published. Yep. Uh, councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The traffic and transport study received quite a few submissions, but tonight I will be voting against this and I'll tell you why. Page 653 of enclosure, resident says bypass, not four lanes. Council's response, proposed infrastructure treatments for Wallonby Road are supported by multiple traffic modelling reports and strategic investigations since 2009. Does that sound like they've listened? That sounds like we know what will work, not you. One of the submissions says that council continues to say that community input is essential, but council are not listening. A large number of community regarding Wallonby Road have requested over and over again a town hall type meeting at a reasonable time so most people who work can attend, but this request continues to fall on deaf ears. Wallonby Road affects all residents of Cecil, not just residents and businesses along the road. That was another submission. Council's response, council capital works programme operates in accordance with the integrated planning and reporting framework which incorporates the Cecil Community Strategic Plan 2036, which prioritises community consultation throughout the development and implement process. The proposed road hierarchy set out in the CTS 2024 assumes that all committed upgrades of Wallonby Road will occur, including duplication to four lanes and intersection upgrades. Hmm. Again, didn't take anything on board, just told the resident that Wallonby Road four lanes will occur. Wallonby Road doesn't even have a shared pathway, which shows you're not even addressing the submissions for a cycleway. That report was a complete waste of funds. How much was it again?
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. I just wanted to briefly touch on the, the sort of the breadth of the community engagement that was undertaken. We specifically pushed for an additional length of time for this report to be on public exhibition and be consulted with. I'd just like to congratulate our comms and engagement team for getting the response that we did. Often, we see a lot of council submissions go out for comment and get, and get sort of lacking responses. We, in this instance, we received 139 formal submissions and we tracked about, you know, over a thousand copies of the plan downloaded and two, over two and a half thousand webpage visits. So, I think that it's, it's good to see an improvement in our communications outcomes. And I'd like to sort of, hopefully, we can see conditions like this as we go forward as well on additional engagements.
Thank you, councillor Hill. With no further debate, we'll now put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Savell, those against. Councillor Watten, councillor Judd. I'll declare it carried. Moving on to report WI7, 2024, moving this way, councillor Sander with, and so councillor Sander, you're moving an additional dot point if we just put that up before it's seconded. Okay. So, yeah, councillor Sander's moving that way. Someone willing to second that? Councillor Moores. Uh, speaking on that, councillor Sander.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will. I'll include the two dot points firstly to enable council to monitor any issues the community may have with operations at the centre that council may not be aware of. The contractor should deal with these issues in the first instance and try to resolve them. By adding this performance measure within the contractor will give council any advice regarding any community concerns in the first instance. And certainly, the second point, that council requests that a report come back to council annually to review the performance of the contractor at the KKAC to ensure the centre is meeting community and council's expectations regarding management and operations of the Currie-Currie Aquatic and Fitness Centre. Thank you.
Thank you. With no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, WI8, 2020, oh, no, we're up to, that's the next item. WI8, 2024, councillor Hawkins is moving that way. Seconded councillor Hill, speaking councillor Hawkins.
Uh, look, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I will just briefly speak to this. Look, I'd like to commend our staff on this. It's been great work both from indoor and outdoor staff. The indoor guys to chase up the grants, we successfully received $100,000 for this programme, which is money that we haven't had to find out of our rates to provide these safety improvements. And just for people that aren't aware and don't use creek crossings and those sorts of things, they can be quite dangerous when there's floodwater around. These are the depth indicators that show people how deep the water is, whether it's, if it's in the dark or rainy conditions. So, these indicators can be the difference between people trying to cross something they're unsure of and making the decision to not take on floodwaters and therefore need to be rescued. So, this not only saves our residents and visitors, I suppose, that aren't familiar with the crossings that we've identified, this will save them the resources to rescue people, but also the people that have their car stuck in a creek till the waters recede. I would just probably note that there are more to do and that we're working on that. This grant application got, I think it's the 15 most sort of prioritised intersection, crossings, sorry, and that we're still committed to upgrading the rest of them that have been identified now. But also, I think I'd just like to sort of inform the residents that if they're aware of dangerous creek crossings and those sorts of things, that council want to hear about them, please bring them to our attention so that we can look at addressing them. There's, you know, outlying communities that we have, they all face these things and know about it. I'm not sure whether they all know that that's something that council can do and something that council can help people with to improve safety. So, I'd just like to thank the staff that have done this and assure the community that we're working towards these things. They're not a do and forget, they're high on our list. Thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Savell. Definitely a great thing to have. We want to make sure that we're not driving to flood zones and we're kept safe on the roads and around our neighbourhoods. Quick question, though, with our LGA neighboring other LGAs, Singleton, Maitland, are we aware of the other councils actually being successful in this particular kind of grant? Because you would hate to, you know, have one sign on one side of a creek and not the other. Just looking to see how we're actually working with other, or if anyone's got any knowledge of that, the HDO joints.
Further to director of works.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, councillor Hawkins, can I take that on notice? I would say that they have undertaken the same approach, but I'll need to confirm that with your joining councils.
No worries. Thank you.
Okay. With no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Yep. Now, moving to WI9, 2024. Just wait. We've got to wait. Okay. So, moving that way, councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Painter. No debates. We'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. If someone asks, councillor... Okay. Now, move on to item BN4, 2024. Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My notice of motion is, one, the general manager report back to council on what services council provide to the community and how the community can access it, or has, can access to it, yeah? Two, the council looking to ways of advertising these services other than their website. Council, so many important...
Sorry, just before we go, is the motion seconded?
Sorry.
Councillor Watten. Now.
Okay, go. Sorry. Council, so many important services for the community that so many people do not know about. The website is hard to use for a lot of the community and most of our elderly do not use computers. Now that the advertiser is no longer a service to spread this information, these changes, I believe, would benefit the community. Reason I put in this notice of motion, all councillors sitting here tonight know the role of a councillor and how challenging it can be. You all know every Friday morning councillor also myself and when he can make it councillor Watten do coffee with councillor and have been doing it pretty much since the start of my term, which we all attend, which all can attend. Councillor Painter has come along also. Anyway, the reason I mention that is because the older residents come on a Friday and they all say, we don't know what is happening. We can't use their website. This nom was from a resident that had been putting out her parents' bin for years and having to drive over 20 minutes to do so. Now she doesn't have to worry about this and she wanted other residents to know, especially for the ones who don't have family that live in the LGA. The GM commentary on this states to have a list of all councillor services is not something that is currently done. This bears the question, how do you know where staff and money is spent if you don't have a services list that council run? He said it would be quickly outdated, particularly in the cases of grant funding, et cetera, which I understand, right? Now, I understand that the GM also says that to get the best information is to go the website. Council is committed to providing a website that is accessible to the widest possible audience regardless of technical ability. If this is the case, why do we have so many residents that can't use it and say that they can't? If council is committed to having the website user-friendly, then why was my nom for changing the website and make it user-friendly not listened to? I don't know how many times I've said it and been laughed at, but I am dyslexic and this website is not user-friendly. That's only one disability. How many others is there? Council has been doing a better job with getting out there and trying to show people what's happening and thank you very much, staff, because it's appreciated and the residents are appreciating it. And this is adding to that. If this nom can't be done, then change it so that council run classes on how to use the website. This is just all about getting it out there, the amazing services that our council provide, and we want our residents to know. We want to showcase how beautiful our council is running and what they have. Thank you.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. As following on from councillor Judd's, moving of this and discussion of the report, I too flicked through the quite lengthy director's commentary in relation to what council currently provides and detailing most recently their campaigns to increase the knowledge for residents and what services are provided. And I think that it will be worthwhile taking on board the commentary and the recommendation provided. And so, I'd like to move an alternate recommendation as per the director's commentary, as it is written on screen.
Yeah, because that, firstly, is the amendment accepted.
I can read it out if you'd like.
The one that was in the director's commentary in the report. The one that was in the director's commentary in the report.
Got one of those things underneath my desk and I keep whacking it. Okay, so the commentary, what you want to do is do, do we offer this service campaign which aims to raise awareness among the residents with a wide variety of services available to them? So that's pretty much what I'm trying to do is raise awareness. So if that's going to raise the community's awareness on what we have.
The second dot point there is in reference to a campaign that has been implemented in the quarter four of 2324 financial year. So I guess per that second dot point of the alternate recommendation is just noting that council has currently or is currently implementing a type of service as per your, the content of your nom. So they have a programme called the Do You Know We Offer This Service Campaign, which basically looks to address what you've raised in your notice of motion. And that's what they're currently undertaking to try to improve awareness to the community about our current services. So I guess it's more or less it's just saying like a, yes, there's currently something being worked on and that we're putting out to do that. And perhaps that might be suitable, perhaps if we can, you know, go the next 12 months, see what this.
Probably straying a bit far into debate around. So back to the question was, are you happy with?
Pretty much all I want to make sure is that the residents know what we have available. And if that's going to make it easier than just the website, because the website, like I said, doesn't help anybody that's got disabilities to be able to use it. So if that is going to showcase what our council does, I'm all for it.
Yep. So that's a yes and a yes. So it now becomes the motion. And then speaking on the motion councillor Painter.
Yeah, my question is for the acting GM, is how, what have you, do we advertise our services? Like with this, do you know we offer this service? Is that advertised on the website, which most people, or some elderly people may not even be able to access because they don't have computers or know how to navigate it? Is that also, say, advertised on the rates which go out physically to the residents? So have a secondary opportunity to be informed.
Acting general manager.
Yeah, thank you councillor Painter. The options in relation to the do you know we offer this service would be on multiple channels, platforms. So it would include our website, include our socials, we include notices in the chamber, notices, sorry, in the admin building, notices in the, some of our posts such as the libraries and the like. Things that could be brought up potentially, the coffee with councillors and those sort of things. Anywhere we have some sort of display or whatever, we can certainly put this information up. So it won't be just one process or one channel, but certainly will be, it'll be a rolling thing. And it'll be, you know, it might be half a dozen services at each time that we do it as we progress forward, you know. Did you know we had the blue disc service? Did you know we have a mattress drop off? Do you know this week we're having the free microchipping day? So the things that we do anyway via media releases, via any range of channels, and that's how we would look to advertise the services that we provide, rather than just a static list of probably the 500 odd services we provide to our community.
Yeah, and so, and one of those channels is the flyers that also go with rates notices.
Yeah, it certainly could be as part of those mailouts that we do.
Yeah. Okay, that answers the question? Yeah. Okay, no, councillor Hawkins.
Look, sorry, just briefly, Mr Mayor, this is the information that we take out to stalls. We had a stall recently at Wall and By Markets. I think we had one at Currie Nostalgia Festival as well. Didn't we? Yeah, these sorts of things. We're actively trying to seek out events and activities that the community are at and participating in so that we can get that message out for wherever they are and wherever we could possibly get to people. So I guess again, I'd like to commend the staff that are proactively seeking out community activities and events that we can send this to. It's not an easy, it's not an easy task and it takes resources that are always stretched and we're sort of, on this side of the table, we're always asking staff to do more with less. So I guess this is an opportunity to thank them and to congratulate them for where they are doing more with less. And these events, these events are something I'm pretty sure everybody is supporting. So the more of it we can get, the better. Thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think we can all agree that the more accessible things can be, the better, particularly with easy read documents, you know, flyers, pamphlets. Quick question about Facebook posts. When we went through our code of conduct training, we talked about, and many councillors here would remember, when if there's comments on your Facebook page, you actually take ownership of it. Anyone recall what I'm talking about here? So if we're gauging that feedback on Facebook Live and we're reading the comments, they could say anything. Is council therefore taking liability for whatever's said on that particular page? Councillor Williams.
The acting general manager.
In relation to the code of conduct training that we had, refresher training, and the ownership of it, any publisher of a Facebook page is responsible for the comments and the like that are attributed on that page. So if we're talking about the council Facebook page, we do monitor that and where there are inappropriate comments, we will remove them. This session at the training last week was more to remind councillors about your individual Facebook pages, where you have people coming in and making comments on that, that ultimately you may be responsible and may be deemed to be a publisher. And there's certain requirements on you in relation to comments that are left on your own pages. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, 100% does. Like we, yeah, it's a complex thing because a lot of media outlets now are just not, they're banning comments. So just seeing how we can actually, you know, gauge it effectively and yeah, definitely get the ownership of things on comments on pages. So, thank you.
Q with no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour, unanimous. Moving on to item BN5 2024 councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My notice of motion is one, the general manager reports back to council on what services, oh, hang on, sorry, wrong one. No wonder it was BN4. Yeah, okay, sorry. One, extend the public expedition period by two weeks, ending on the 17th of May 2024. And two, organise two public meetings in that time as per the notice of motion from council meeting on the 21st of February 2024.
Is that seconded councillor Watten? Speaking on that councillor Jurd.
First, I just want to ask a question. Raise your hand if your employer would let you have two hours off in the middle of the day to attend a meeting about a road in your LGA. Yeah, that's what I thought. Next question, raise your hand if your kids sport on weeknights and Saturday, if you have kids sports on weeknights and Saturday mornings. Yeah. I want to say council staff have been doing a great job attending these meetings, but the problem is the conflicting information given and residents not feeling heard. The traffic and transport study engagement report was placed onto council's website on the 10th of April. I'm just trying to understand how residents' submissions have been taken into account. I've read over the engagement report, extremely small writing, for anyone that struggles, they're not going to be able to read it. But this report is to identify the key issues and outcomes to determine the direction in which Wall and By Road upgrade. It should address the objectives in the traffic and transport plan, but I don't see that integrated into the Wall and By Road upgrade. The Wall and By Road upgrade plan has, and without consideration to the strategy, been drafted, still only primarily, to provide a commentary, commitment to undertake works on council's behalf to enable the Bellburn North urban release area development. But keep in mind that the development as it stands has stalled, which limits our obligation to undertake the works until the developer release reaches the quota of lots required for a subdivision certificate. So why are we running concurrent approvals when the outcome of the traffic and transport plans haven't been communicated to the community? The traffic and transport plan identifies improved active transport links, cycleways, footpaths. This draft plan doesn't contain anything. And keep in mind, refined design development will be costing us more from this point. We're signing up to empty council coffers without considering the options outlined in the engagement report. Page 652 of the enclosure two, a resident says they have spoken to neighbours to which some still had no idea what council was doing and have never been approached by the engagement team. That they even spoke to senior council staff who agreed this would cause bottlenecks and not alleviate the traffic issue. We need a bypass, not a quick fix for a political and developers' gain, they said. No one denies that it needs some upgrades, but four lanes is not an upgrade. And council's response to this, and to many others with the same concerns, proposed infrastructure treatments for Wall and By Road are supported by multiple traffic modelling reports and strategic investments since 2009. Where are those reports? Why, so why are we in 2024 and residents have not seen them? Where is the extra money from the budget blowout before it's even started coming from? It's not, it's no longer a $33 million project, it's now 45.5 million. On the 27th of March, the Bellburg Coffee with Councilors, I asked the director of works quite a few questions in an email. Some were, where's the contributions, the breakdown on how much and where the money is coming from, the rules on contributions and how they can and can't be used, how are we able to use contributions from the whole LGA for Wall and By Road, examples of other projects in the LGA where we have used the contribution system to pay for something that wasn't a direct collection for that DA, the minutes and information about the meeting with the railway corridor, information about Alfred Street and what intersection would look like onto West Av, Alfred Street and its bus stop, will it be in it or not, intersections at Bellburn North, new intersection or how it looked like, will residents be able to do a U-turn there, clearways and rules on it, as today you disagree, as today we, that we disagreed that we don't need staff to come and check the clearway every morning with tow trucks to remove vehicles. As this information hasn't been provided yet, this is why we need the two weeks for the resident to have this information. Most residents probably don't know that council already did the first tender information session yesterday to do the proper design. How can you do that before the RAF hasn't even closed for community input? Not being transparent here, are we? Not taking the public interest into consideration. If we don't pass this tonight and give residents a chance to have a meeting held where they can attend in person and get the same information, then residents will be thinking seriously about why council won't listen to them. Thank you.
Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. Initially, I'll just be quick on a question in regards to timeframes. Councillor Jurd has mentioned a number of times in her discussions that the members of the public or a number of members of the public have been unable to attend due to work or due to other events in the evening. In the director's commentary for this notice of motion, there's a table that outlines details of the five planned consultation sessions council has run for this matter. One's happening between 5pm and 7pm, one between 6pm and 8pm, one between 5pm and 7pm on a different day of the week, one on 10, between 10am and 12pm on a weekend, and then the additional Facebook digital version to assist people who are unable to attend in person from 4pm to 5pm, which was held today, which can then also be viewed back at the person's leisure. Is there an instance or a time, if there is a demand for people to be able to attend these sessions, why have we seen consistently throughout this consultation period, a relatively low attendance across varying different days and timeframes and communication methods for this consultation?
I don't think it was a question, it was a statement from, councillor Hawkins.
Look, thanks, Mr Mayor. I think we've done a lot of consultation on this. I've attended as many of these events as possible and the feedback's been interesting. People are intrigued, I suppose. And as we've got more information throughout the process, they've taken that away and the inquiries, I suppose you would say, have been less and less, which to me says we're answering the questions. They don't need to ask the same question five times at five different meetings. But I think I'd probably just like to read one comment that we received in our traffic and transport strategy. And it's with regards to Wall and By Road. And we've had a few reports quoted of people, but this one says, hi, I just wanted to counsel to know that I fully support the strategy. As a Sessnock community member, I feel like I need to say that the loudest voices are not necessarily the majority. There has been a lot of misinformation going around and all the mostly sane people I have spoken with agree with me. Just this afternoon.
Just hold on councillor, I'll ask the gallery to come to order. Councillor Hawkins.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Just this afternoon, somebody letterbox my house with a two-page rant about the bad sides of the proposal. This so-called, I'm guessing it's expletive, it's been redacted, but also their name's been redacted too. So it may have just been identifiable. The Sessnock community Facebook page is full of these people that have nothing better to do and also probably don't need to drive during peak hour traffic. I'm getting beside the point now. In any case, people in rural towns are just used to on-street parking, but they will learn how to use driveways and any changes that improve Sessnock get a tick of approval from me. You guys are doing good work. Now, I'm not sure if that was a reference to the communications strategy team or a reference to the council progressing the traffic and transport strategy or the Wall and By Road project team that are updating and keeping the community informed about the proposal and its merits and its needs. But I just wanted to highlight perhaps that there are always two sides to a story and it points out that people in our community are well aware that there are issues and they're well aware that, and I quote, the loudest voices are not necessarily the majority. So I just thought I'd read on to the record that people, people are listening and people are making their own minds up about merits of proposals. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. No further debate, let's put the item, all those in favour. Of the item is councillor Watten. We, you didn't, we've already, yeah, well, you, yeah. Councillor Watten and councillor Jurd. Those against councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval. Declare it lost. Any councillor reports?